Okay, we're live, folks.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome to our second meeting for August. And I guess we'll get the party started.
Okay. Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Council of the City of Long Beach, held Tuesday, August 18th, 2020, at 7:00 PM. We have a roll call, Councilmember Delory.
Present.
Councilmember Mandell.
Present.
Councilmember Treston.
Here.
Vice President McGinnis.
Present.
President Bendo.
Present.
Let the record indicate the present Subcity Manager Donna Gaden and Corporation Council Simone Freeman will now have a salute to the flag.
Okay, Vice President McGinnis, would you please lead us?
Sure. I pledge allegiance
To the plan
of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. And I guess we will start with the city manager report.
Thank you, good evening, everyone. The first thing I'm going to talk about in my report is that I had stated earlier that we would have a financial meeting for the community to go over the multi-year to go over where we are financially. Since we are not able to meet as of yet in the public and we're still putting the final touches on the draft multi-year plan, we're going to move that to like mid-September and hopefully we will be able to meet in person. On that, my entire report is going to be on the Engel Berman project. So I will ask Mr. McNally first to give us an update to make sure everybody knows about the meeting tomorrow.
Thank you, City Manager Gaden. In case everybody is not aware, the delayed public hearing or rescheduled public hearing is now scheduled for tomorrow, Wednesday, August 19th. They are doing two separate time slots duly in two separate locations. The time slots are tomorrow from 3:00 until 5:00 in the afternoon. And then they're picking up again from 6:30 and they will run that portion of the public hearing until no comments are left to be made. The meeting is going to be held both virtually via Zoom, which the link to register for that and registering for the virtual component is mandatory is on the IDA's website, which is Nassau County IDA dot O R G. And then importantly, and in part at the city's requesting, they are also holding it in person at the Allegria Hotel, which is 80 West Broadway, for any of those that were unfamiliar with it. There is no, currently no registration required to attend. But obviously, social distancing protocols will be in play, the capacity of the room will be managed, we ask that everybody wear masks and such. The city website also has had, we have a landing page essentially for information, which is the news in our city. There is the top post on the news in our city on our website, links to a number of documents related to it. It's both the proposed abatement, or the requested abatement, rather, an economic study by Camoin, an analysis that was done for the city on the impacts to the city's finances by our advisor CMA, as well as the public hearing information and a link to the IDA's website where you can register. So again, that's tomorrow from 3:00 to 5:00 o'clock and then from 6:30 until close, both via Zoom, which can be registered for on the IDA's website, Nassau IDA dot org, or at the Allegria Hotel, which is 80 West Broadway. That's about it, Donna.
Thank you. The next person who's going to speak is Tom Busakis from CMA. They're our financial advisors and they have been looking at the whole project. Dave, can you put this spreadsheet up, spreadsheet up? Okay, Tom? It's all.
Thank you, and good evening, everybody. As the city manager mentioned, my name is Tom Busakis, I'm with Capital Markets Advisors, the financial advisor to the city of Long Beach. We were asked to put together a tax analysis for the proposed development by Engel Berman, detailing the expected property tax pilot revenue and expenses that would be incurred by the city and see what kind of impact it would have to the bottom line. So this analysis was based primarily on two reports. One commissioned by the developer Engel Berman from Nelson Pope and Voorhees Fiscal and Economic Impact, as well as a subsequent report from the National Development Council.
Wait, I'm sorry, Tom. Dave, is there any way you can make that larger? Go ahead, Tom, while he's trying to make it larger, thank you.
Sure, so the second report was conducted by the National Development Council, which assists local, state and local governments with economic projects and developments. So they conduct their own independent analysis of the Nelson Pope and Voorhees study. So this is based on, first, the condos, which are proposed to be built, two condo buildings. One that would be completed about two years after the start of the construction period, which is anticipated potentially for later this year, and then another year after that for the subsequent building, which would consist of a total of 200 units, as well as a rental building with about 240 to 250 units that would be completed in the two, the first two years. The numbers here are based on the current assessments that are anticipated, as well as a pilot structure that is currently being proposed, although that is still subject to some negotiation. This has been proposed by the Nassau IDA currently. The expenses are based on the number of expected additional occupants in the two, the three buildings, so the expected additional residents in the city. So beginning in the 2024 fiscal year, that would be when both the property taxes, pilot revenue and expenses would be first realized, which should provide a small net positive to the city of about $500,000. It would, we would expect it to grow from there as the additional units come online. At the end of the 25-year, was proposed a 25-year pilot period, we would expect a total net positive impact to the city of about $33.7 million. So each year, we would expect it to be a positive impact to the city from a revenue and expense side, with a pretty good impact at the end of this. And then once the pilot period ends, then the pilot on the rental would expire and those would be assessed at their full valuation, which is an even greater amount than, than what the pilot would be.
Thank you, Mr. Bendo. President Bendo.
Okay, thank you. So what we are trying to do here tonight is give you information that we have gotten so you can make, you know, come to your own conclusion about what you think about this in case anybody wants to make any comments at, at the public hearing. The city was not involved in any way with determining what this pilot is. The first we heard from the IDA was when they sent us a certified letter telling us that they were going to hold a public hearing. So the city had no involvement in any of the discussions on this, so we, of course, asked for information so we could convey that to you. So like I said, you could be educated about what's being proposed to be done in our town and, and develop any, any comments you may want to make. This is a flyer that, that we put together, just kind of summarizes what's going on. So again, you have an overall picture. So you've heard the name many times now, Engel Berman is the real estate developer. They also built that building, the Aqua, which is a little, a little east of the, where the super block is, it's that luxury building. And they're now proposing to buy the super block from iStar and develop their project. As Tom pointed out, three buildings, 200 condos and 238 rentals, two condo buildings of 100 units each and one rental building with 238. So they are asking for a pilot or a tax break is the simplest way we know it, or a tax abatement. So what we wanted you to know is, A, so for those of you that were involved with iStar and that abatement and now kind of comparing it, so iStar was only going to be apartments, rental apartments, no condos, this is, as I said, 200 condos, 238 rentals. iStar was going for a very significant height variance, 50% height variance, 25% density variance, so they were going up to, I believe it was 17 stories when it's owned for 10, but remember, two of those are parking because of the new FEMA regulations. iStar originally was looking for $129 million pilot. When that one didn't make it, they went back a second time for $109 million over 20 years. That's the pilot that we had the public hearing for here in Long Beach for that $109 million one. Engel Berman is seeking a 25-year pilot for $49 million. Another thing that may be worth knowing is that Engel Berman, like iStar was going to do, Engel Berman will be replacing the infrastructure, the water and sewer lines from the super block up to Park Avenue where the main water and sewer lines are for the, for the city infrastructure. They will be paying for that upgrade of that infrastructure if they do the project. That's about a $4 million cost that they will pick up, the city won't have to do that. Another thing is, we're being told, we haven't seen anything in writing yet, but we're being told that you may know that iStar is suing the city for $100 million, claiming the city didn't support their pilot enough, whatever you think of that lawsuit. But what we're told is that one of the stipulations of Engel Berman buying the super block is that, that lawsuit would be dropped and would go away. Again, we haven't seen anything in writing, but that's what we are, we have been told by Engel Berman, it's a condition that they have put on the deal. As John had pointed out, there's the, the hearing time tomorrow. So this flyer, we're going to post it online, so you have access to it. And those numbers you see there, I'm going to get into a lot, a little more detail in a second. Dave, if you could put the, the next slide up. So for those of you that were around for iStar, you, you may know or may remember that I was probably one of the most vocal people in the city about that pilot. So for my edification, I needed to do an apples-to-apples comparison of the iStar pilot, the Engel Berman pilot, to see what we were getting on this go-around. That, to me, was going to give some perspective on what iStar was and, and what might be the same now, if, quite frankly, if we were getting a, a bad deal or not. So this is something that I developed. So if you look at the, the iStar pilot side, you'll see a net fiscal impact to the city. What that basically is, is after iStar pays their taxes and the city provides the services to the facility, you know, the building site and the residence, does the city, does the city come out on the plus or the minus side? So those numbers you see there in parentheses in red mean that on all those years there, the cost to the city to provide services to that site, based on the taxes that they would have paid, the city would have been, come out on the negative side, meaning it would have cost the city more to provide services to the site than they would have paid with their taxes, than they would have covered with their taxes. So you can see there, out of, out of a 20-year pilot on iStar, they, that the city was subsidizing the project for 17 out of the 20 years. And that, those numbers are not, we didn't make those up, those came straight out of the, the report the IDA did on the financial analysis of the project. So what you will see is after 20 years total, the length of the pilot, the net impact to the city over 20 years would have been just over a million dollars, meaning the city comes out, I guess, ahead after paying all its expenses, about a million dollars after 20 years. But what's important to note is that's because in year 20, you will see they were making a large balloon payment in the final year of the pilot that brought it into the black. Otherwise, the city would have, like I said, would have effectively lost the money on that pilot. And that was, one of the reasons there was so much angst over that pilot is that it just was not perceived to be a, in the interests of the taxpayers of the city. If you shift off, you'll see that is the net fiscal impact from the rentals alone and then from the condos alone, and then a total net fiscal impact to the city. So again, that fiscal impact is after the city, after they pay their taxes and the city provides all its services, did we spend more in providing services than they paid in taxes, or did they pay more in taxes than it cost us to provide services? So what you will see is on the rentals, for about 11 years, they're paying less in taxes than we estimate it will cost the city to provide services. Those are based on the analysis CMA did, that Tom just talked about, those that, we use their numbers. And you'll see, like I said, in, in 11 years, where you are subsidizing the project. But now, if you take into account the condominiums, which will pay full taxes, there will be no tax break of any kind on the condominiums, they pay full taxes, that the amount of taxes the condominiums pay does far exceed the net fiscal impact, meaning that, from the condos, does far exceed the net fiscal impact from the rentals. So as you can see there, you know, for a number of years, the rentals are being subsidized in the range of about $44,000 for a number of years. But then you'll see that the condos, the net fiscal impact from them is, after year one, is over a million dollars a year. So it, it more than offsets, far more offsets the the subsidy for the rentals. So you can see the net fiscal impact to the city there is about a million dollars a year starting in year two, and then it goes up from there. Now, this is also based on an assumption that the taxes on the condominiums, so the way the pilot works is the IDA assumes a inflation adjustment each year. The IDA used 1.81%. So the amount the taxes increase each, each year on the pilot is 1.81%. That's a number that they supposedly use on all their, their projects, right, at least right now, it's based on inflation right now. They used that same number for the increase on the condominiums. That being said, the taxes on the condominiums are tied to whatever the city budget decides the tax increases each year. So if taxes go up 3%, the condo taxes go up 3%. If they go up 1%, the condo taxes go up 1%. So the condo taxes will, will be, the increase on the condo tax each year will be the exact same increase that we all pay each year on our taxes. So it's not tied to any inflation, there is no break given on the condos. So just want everybody to be clear on that, so you have the right information. The Engel Berman pilot, as I said, is a 25-year pilot. So what I did here is I showed the first 20 years, so you could do a, a direct apples-to-apples comparison to the iStar pilot, and then I showed the last five years as kind of a separate breakout underneath. So what you'll see is iStar, over the 20 years of their pilot, would have paid $27,748,000 in taxes. Engel Berman will pay just over $88 million in taxes. So Engel Berman will be paying about $61.5 million more in taxes over the 20 years than iStar would have paid. As I said, the net fiscal impact to the city over the 20 years from iStar was about a million dollars. And again, that was mainly because of that balloon payment in year 20. The net fiscal impact for the city from the overall project on the super block, both the rentals and the condos, is about $24.5 million. So you can see it as a significant difference in what the city would be getting from one project to the other. Over the 25 years of the pilot, the net fiscal impact to the city would be about $33.7 million with them paying $123 million in taxes. Now, one other thing, just to note in what's not shown here, is in year 26, which I know that's a long way off, but just another piece of information for you to have, in year 26, the taxes on the rentals go up 25%. Because the way it works is the, the taxes get adjusted each year, the pilot amount gets adjusted each year on the rentals by 1.81%, that inflation factor I talked about for the first 10 years, so years one to 10. In year 11, the taxes start going up 5% per year. So what happens is, when you get to year 25, that will get them to 75% of full taxes on the rentals. The pilot ends after year 25, so in year 26, they will see a 25% tax increase on the rentals. And then they will pay full taxes on the rentals from that point forward. And of course, like I said, they will be paying full taxes the entire time on the condos. There's, there's no break there. So again, this is just more information we wanted to give you, so you can draw your own conclusions. Again, if anybody plans to, to provide any remarks, you have the data you need to make informed remarks, rather than just go up there and speculate. Now you have the information to go up there and speak with facts. So I, I hope you find this helpful, we're going to post these on the city website, so you will be able to download them and, and again, use them. And like I said, I hope you find this, this helpful. So with that, I guess, Donna, do we have anything else we need to?
No, the end of my report.
Okay, then why don't we move on to the agenda?
Okay, one second. Okay, item number one is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement for construction of the downtown to the Boardwalk Resilient Connectivity Project along Edwards Boulevard and to amend the budget.
Okay, this, I'm going to guess, sounds like a John Morando thing, so.
Okay, let me, John, you're unmuted, go ahead.
Okay, so back in January, we put this project out for bid, that we had a $1 million, $66,000 grant from New York State DOT, and we had budgeted a million dollars for the city. The project came in at about $3 million. So we went back to NV5, the design engineer, and we removed several items from open work. We moved all work south of the Broadway with the exception of the bike lanes and the bike lane signage, removed all landscape items, which we will do, which will not just be top soil and seed, and somewhere online we'll do our own landscaping. We removed all test pit and water main offset items, which we'll perform if it becomes necessary with our own water personnel. We removed all the green surface treatment and bike lanes, as this was not a requirement from New York State DOT, and we removed the permeable pavers on Beach Street to get this project in line. So the project was rebid. In June, we received nine bids, the prices ranged in low of $2,660,000 to a higher $4,447,000. A low bidder was Aij Allen Industries, who have done several other projects for us very successfully, and therefore recommending that this project be awarded to them. All these documents and the bids were reviewed by New York State DOT and approved by them to proceed with the, the award.
Okay, John, can you just, I mean, you kind of talked about what was taken out of the project, could you just touch on what will be done as part of the project, so people know?
Yes, part of the project will be repaving, new bike lane from Park Avenue down to, to the Boardwalk. It will include new drainage features, green drainage in the islands, and it'll include all new access, access ramps at every intersection and all new markings on the, on the project.
Okay.
I just have a quick question, Commissioner Morando, can you just let us know the timeframe from start to finish roughly?
This will probably be a three to four month project, where, which will probably start sometime in September.
Okay, thank you.
John, just one quick, did you say the name of the company was Aij Allen Industries?
Aai.
Aai, sorry, okay. Just wanted to confirm that. All right, and, go ahead.
Mr. Morando, can you just tell us one of the projects that they've done in the city?
Okay, they just finished, as a matter of fact, East Fulton Avenue, which was, you know, water main, sewer main, new pavement, new curb sidewalks, new light fixtures. They also had recently done West Hudson Street with the new bulkhead next to Lindell School, that whole island and that all included green drainage also, and several other projects before I was here, so.
Thank you.
Okay, and John, just one, the, the serial bonds mentioned in the resolution, those are the ones that are part of the capital plan that was approved, correct?
Correct, correct.
Okay. All right, any other questions from the council? Okay, did we get any questions from the public?
I have to unmute myself. Are we going to, will there be new drawings associated with this project?
Well, there were new drawings already sent out with the bids. This, this is not the design portion, this is the actual construction portion of the project. The design was done by NV5, which we had out of our P, but then we did all the design drawings, and those are available up in, in DPW's office also.
Okay, any more questions from the council? All right, hearing none, did we get any questions from the public?
Yes, there are two questions. First one from Allison Blanchett, bear with me here for a second. So from Allison, my questions and comments center around flexibility of the vendor in the third phase of the downtown to Boardwalk Resiliency Connectivity Project along Edwards Boulevard. Is the third phase flexible to incorporate new published guidelines and recommendations for design elements that are in sync with bicycle boulevards rather than traditional sheroes, which were part of the original design? Following the spirit of a bicycle boardwalk design, will the speed limit on Edwards be reduced? The reach of this project is the south side of Park Avenue, will the community development grant money for transitoring its street safety enhancements voted on at the last council meeting, be able to address the center of the intersections where Edwards crosses Park to fill that gap? Since the writing and award of this grant, there have been few changes to the New York State Vehicle and Traffic Law, in addition to published guidelines for National Association of City Transportation officials in regard to bicycles, scooters and pedestrians. I would recommend the city council keep that in mind when voting on this vendor, so that you can make certain there is flexibility in any necessary tweaks to the final design. I am very excited to see this project finally realized. As an addendum, she followed up and said, I just wrote, I want to make certain you understand my intentions, not to provide public input on design, but to provide input on the need for having flexibility with the vendor, working on the final design due to the many changes, new guidelines, laws and pandemic altering transportation options. So do you want to take that one on, Commissioner Morando?
Well, just, just in short, this is a very tight project. This is bid based on the design drawings supplied by the engineer and, in addition, design drawings approved by the New York State DOT, and their feeling was that everything that we resubmitted meets their requirements. Anything that we do change, there is no contingency in this budget. This is going to be a very tight project, so any changes that may come up are going to have to be approved by New York State DOT first, and then we're going to have to determine if it's a net positive or a net negative to the total budget. determine if it's a net positive or a net negative to the total budget. And if it's a net positive to the budget, then we need to just find more monies to pay for those changes.
Okay, I guess, did we cover all of them then, all the questions?
No, there's one more from Roy Lester. So according to the resolution, we will be issuing bonds for over $2 million for this project. Have these bonds already been voted on with prior capital project bonds, or are they new ones? And then a second question is, what will that bring our total debt to? Please include all liabilities. And lastly, was AIJ Allen the lowest bidder or the lowest responsible bidder?
They are both the lowest and most responsible.
Okay. And can you speak to the bond issue?
The theme is on the line, I think they better first that mentioning, but what it would do, what debt is just $1 million, as we will be reimbursed for $1,66,000 from New York State DOT in an already previously approved grant.
I've unmuted you.
Hi, how are you? John, please read again from the top of that question when it's talking about the bonding, if it's old or new.
Sure thing. So according to the resolution, we'll be issuing bonds for over $2 million for this project. Have these bonds already been voted on with the prior capital project bonds, or are they new ones? And I guess if it's the latter, what will that bring our total debt to?
These are not the new ones. These are from the prior year capital projects and bond authorizations. This from the existing bond authorizations.
Okay, that was all of the questions, Mr. Bendo.
Okay, thank you. Then, hearing nothing else, let's move on to the next item.
Okay, item two has been taken off the calendar. Item three is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract for the removal of accumulation of grit and grease from the water pollution control plant with the lowest responsible bidder.
Okay, I'm gonna guess that's Mr. Morando again?
Yes, the first process down at the wastewater treatment plant is to remove any grit and grease from the waste stream. That grit and grease is carted into dumpsters, and each we bid out to remove those dumpsters and to a licensed environmental caller. We received three bids, the lowest being $1,200 per pull, a pull is one dumpster pulled being taken out, and a high of 3,820. Tully Environmental was the low bidder at $1,200. They have been doing this work for us since I've been here and probably before that, and it's the same price as it was last year.
Okay, any questions from the council? All right, hearing none, did we get any questions from the public?
Yes, one question from Roy Lester. How often do we have to remove the grit and grease from the water pollution control plant, and is there a limit to how much we would spend on this? Following that, would normal maintenance stop this from accumulating, and if not, why not? And lastly, was Tully Environmental the lowest bidder or the lowest responsible bidder?
They were the lowest bidder and the lowest responsible bidder. Dumpster's are pulled every couple of weeks, we have enough money and I'll get to cover this every year. This is not something that we can change, this is part of the treatment drain. We're required to remove the grit and the grease from the waste stream before it goes into the next process, which is the primary settling tank. What we do do, though, however, is try to stay on top of the restaurants with the grease disposal to reduce the amount of grease that goes into the system. And in addition, we use a bacteria in many of our sewer mains and in our pump stations to reduce the amount of grease that's produced.
Okay.
That was the only question on that agenda item.
Okay. All right, so hearing nothing else, let's move on to the next item.
Item four is a resolution authorizing the city manager to accept and execute a grant on behalf of the city of Long Beach from the New York State Department of Health.
Okay, is this gonna be Ms. Bourne, or Donna, who's talking on this one?
It should be Commissioner Morando.
Oh, okay.
Last year I was approached by, actually a year and a half ago, I was approached by the New York State Health Department, wanting to know if we would like $611,000 towards replacement and removal of lead service lines. And I said certainly, so I worked out a program with them, we finally got approval on the program. The way this will work is, we mostly have, we don't have a lot of lead services, straight lead services, but we have a lot of galvanized services. And what happens with galvanized services at the main, they use what's called a lead gooseneck to prevent the main from settling and tearing. And those need to be replaced. It's, we will do this with our operating budget for materials and supplies when we identify these. Any quarter, we put in a requisition to the New York State Health Department, and they reimburse us for our labor materials and our overheads. We estimate we'll do, we'll be able to, this year, replace approximately 135, I believe, of these services. And that's basically it.
All right, any questions from the council? Mr. Delory?
Yes, Commissioner Morando, thank you. How do you come across these goosenecks when they appear? Like, how would you know where they are?
Well, by our service records. When we get a service that's replaced, we put, you know, we generally replace it with copper from the property line to the main.
Right.
But we have a record of what services exist, and a lot of times, it's pretty general knowledge based on the years that the service were put in. So we have a pretty good idea of the areas that have them from previous leaks, things of that nature. But we have a pretty good record, and we will be able to determine where we'll replace them. And in addition, when we're doing work with contractors, we'll write it, it's written, will be written into the contracts, that when they come across a gooseneck, whatever the cost is for replacing that service, we'll use that also to be reimbursed directly.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Any other questions from the council? Okay, I got a couple. John, the resolution says that we could complete about 139 replacements. Do we have an idea approximately how many lead water service lines there are in the city?
There's probably 300 to 400 of them still.
Okay, so how will it be determined which ones are replaced?
Well, I think what we'll do is we'll look at those areas where we have the most breaks on service lines and try to get to those first. And people shouldn't panic right away, because we treat with lime, our lead results that we get every year that we do are very, very good. We have very little leaching of lead. And that's because, you know, many water systems use caustic soda to raise the pH. We use lime, and as a result, lime coats the inside of the service and inside of the main, inside of the brass fixtures in people's homes. So when we do our lead sampling every year, we end up with very good results.
Okay, and just one final question. Somebody that might have one of these lead service lines, if they have that Brady Risk insurance, does that cover the cost of any of that replacement?
I know, Brady Risk is strictly, I believe, on the sewer connections, not on the water connections.
Okay, thank you.
But there are programs out there, by the way, that people can, are taken by other companies that do cover water services.
Okay. So any final questions from the council? Okay, did we get any questions from the public?
Not on this agenda item.
Okay, on to the next item.
Item five is a resolution authorizing the city manager to accept and execute a grant on behalf of the city of Long Beach from the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation and to amend the budget.
And this is Greg Scott.
Okay.
Greg, you're unmuted, go ahead.
Say that again, Dave, what this grant is for? Dave?
Yeah, this item is a execute a grant on behalf of the city of Long Beach from the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation and to amend the budget.
That's with you and Patty. Patty, can you?
This is the recycling grant, Greg.
Oh, yes, yes, yes. Oh, yes.
Patty, you're also unmuted as well.
Yes, well, with this grant here, we just received the approval for the award for the one that we did about three to four years ago. And this particular grant is going to pay for two of the garbage trucks that we just purchased for the sanitation department. And we just applied for a new grant that will be possible, hopefully approved in the next four years for additional trucks and additional equipment, as well as recycling bins and things of that nature. We did receive approval for the grant, two additional garbage trucks. And we need to amend the budget to make sure that we can get that grant money, which we already paid for the truck. So I put in all the paperwork to DEC, and just waiting for their approval.
Greg?
Yeah, I'm sorry to interrupt, Greg. This is the grant for the education component of recycling, as we start to switch to dual stream.
Right, it's, this is Patty Bourne. Greg, as Greg said, we are focusing, and have for many years, on reducing our waste stream and recycling and eliminating waste. And part of the need for that is to educate all of us on the new processes and requirements, because recycling keeps changing. So this is for a person, for staff, to reimburse staff to and for expenses to work with our residential customers, our commercial customers, our nonprofits, to talk to everyone about how we can use training and education to reduce our waste stream, which saves us money, helps the community, and is something that we know residents really want to do. The nice thing about this grant is it's a reimbursement at 50%. So any activities we decide to take part in, we will get reimbursed for half of it. And the way the resolution is written is very good, because it says "up to," which means we have the control of how much we need to use. And we won't use any more of this grant than we actually need to be reimbursed for it to keep the cost down. We could see it includes flyers or mailing, signage, whatever we need over the next couple of months to make this work. Now, another part of the grant is that it does sunset, I found out from Tyler Huffman, who put the application in. It does sunset at the end of this year, but we are going to monitor to see if in October they offer this grant again for next year. And if they don't, because the state has limited and reduced certain grant opportunities, then we will go back to DEC and say, can we expand the contract into next year, so we can have the money available as we need it? And the key word there is only as we need it, to minimize costs, but to use the funds to expand the opportunities on recycling.
Thank you, Patty. What do you mean by additionally? Does this calendar year or fiscal year?
It's the calendar year December right now, at the end of the, December 2020.
And how will the Environmental Board do in implementing this grant?
I apologize, but I'm really very poor service right now. We had our power out last night. Could you repeat what you just asked?
Sorry about that. Can you please let me know how the Environmental Board will work with you to facilitate this grant?
Yes, the Environmental Advisory Board has been a tremendous supporter for the city, very involved people with a lot of experience, and they have great ideas, and they're aware of this grant and will work with the city to implement it. And they're all volunteers on that board.
Correct. And finally, does this mean we have to find dollar for dollar additional funds in the budget to cover this grant, dollar for dollar? Is that correct?
There are funds, according to the resolution, in the publicity area, so we expect to use some funds already in the budget, I believe, if that's correct, Donna.
Yes, that is correct. In the resolution, it has publicity miscellaneous, and that's where we would take it from. I wanted to say, Greg, I'm going to take it as that you were a little nervous, because you was grant backwards and forwards, and we've talked about this many times. So I'll just take it as you were a little nervous tonight, and you had garbage trucks on your mind.
Yes, I did.
But it's okay, it's okay.
That was more Patty, thanks for the help, Patty.
I wouldn't take anything less than that. Appreciate it.
Okay.
All right, any other questions from the council members?
I just have one question. Patty, is any of this, is any of the labor need to be tracked for this grant, or is it strictly printing and materials and things like that? It says recycling, education, coordination, planning, and promotion. Didn't know if.
Yes, we can get reimbursed with staff time, for city staff time, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, other questions from the council? Did we get any questions from the public?
There's one question from Mr. Lester. If I understand this resolution correctly, the city would receive up to $40,780 to be used to expand recycling programs and increase public education through such things as mailers and signage, as well as provide a salary funds for the recycling coordinator. It's also my understanding that the city would have to match it, match the amount it receives. Please explain to me what needs to be done to expand the recycling program and increase the public education, since as it stands now, everybody has recycling bins they use. Please also enlighten me to the fact, if we currently have a recycling coordinator, and if we don't, why one is deemed necessary?
Now, if I, just before, I'm not sure who's gonna take that one on, but correct me if I'm wrong, one of the issues we have is our recycling rate is actually not so great in Long Beach, correct?
Commissioner Morando, do you want to jump in on this, or would you like me to field? Because there's a couple of dimensions at play as to why we, the education is necessary.
Yeah, our recycling rate is about 14 to 16% of our total MSW. But more importantly, I think this is a golden opportunity to improve that, because at the end of this year, our recycling contract is over. We'll be working on new methods of recycling, and it'll be a good opportunity to educate people on what really can be recycled and what the best way to dispose of it is, you know, to treat for it and to increase the percentage of recycling that we do. A lot of communities do anywhere from 20 to 30%. So 40% is really kind of low.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't it cheaper for us to get rid of the recycling than it is for the normal trash?
Well, it is right now, because right now, we have a great deal, we pay $2.50 for recycling. But because of the markets have changed so much, and particularly related to glass, and the types of plastic that you can recycle now, it's going to be harder, because there's going to be less things that really can be recycled. So in addition to what people throw at us recyclables, we need to educate people on the types of containers and things that they buy their foods in and their things. But we could see prices as high as $80 a ton for getting rid of recycling, which is on par with our MSW. So which is discouraging, but it's what the markets are right now.
Right. But in the short term, we could see some savings if people improve their recycling, since we're only paying 2.50 a ton.
Absolutely.
And then as we get into the more complicated matters, like you said, because it's getting a little complicated with what they will and won't take, people are going to have to possibly change their current habits and have to educate them on that.
Right, and it's not just educating them on recycling, we need to educate them on reducing their disposals, and in addition, reusing some of their disposables.
Mr. Morando, this is Liz. Correct me if I'm wrong, but are, at that meeting that I attended a while ago regarding recycling, we were talking about that it, there may be some legislation almost that has to be statewide. we were talking about that it, there may be some legislation almost that, that has to be statewide regarding packaging and reduction.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, uh, I think, I think we answered his question. Did we miss any piece of it?
Hmm, I'm sorry, I was having issues unmuting myself. Uh, the last one is, do we have a current recycling coordinator? And why, if we don't, why is one being deemed necessary? Um, again, this is another one that I can answer this quickly too, because I've been part of this one, is this is, we're not necessarily going to be hiring one. We can use this grant as we choose with any number of options available to us. So, um, we may choose to have one if we, we deem it necessary, we may not.
Okay. Um, any other questions from the, well, no, I'm sorry, we already got the council. So, uh, were there any other questions from the public?
That was it.
All right, then on to the next item.
Okay, item number six is a resolution authorizing the city council to enter into a contract memorializing the city manager's employment.
Okay, so, uh, Ms. Gaden's contract is up at the end of this month, so another, just under two weeks. Uh, um, the council is, uh, very happy with, um, her performance and we have, uh, asked her to stay on. So, and the fact that we let the air out of her tires probably might have made it, had a little something to do with it. But, um, she, we're giving her a one-year contract that commences on September 1st. And, uh, so this will be good too, because this, um, again, for those of you to kind of follow closer, you know that the bond, uh, the credit rating agencies that follow the city, um, one of the criticisms was the turnover in, in leadership. So, um, now we're, uh, we're getting some certainty here for the next year in that, which is, uh, gives some reassurance to the bond markets. Um, and it's, again, a professional city manager, um, not a political appointee. So, uh, that has actual municipal management and especially the financial experience we need. Uh, so what's changing? Because, uh, I'm sure people want it. It's really only two changes from the previous contract. Um, one is the salary. It's going from 178,000 to 190,000. That's a 6.5% raise. Um, we think it's money well spent and, um, kind of, um, on par with what, uh, a professional city manager, uh, would get. The other change is, um, because she's now staying, she, you may remember with the last contract, she had her own health insurance that was from, uh, out of state. Uh, since she's now staying in New York, her out-of-state insurance will no longer cover her in New York. So, uh, she will be going on to the city's medical insurance like the, like, uh, other employees. So those are really the only two changes, uh, from the, from the previous contract. And any questions from the council?
I don't, I don't have a question, but I just have a little, uh, bit of a statement. Is that okay?
Okay.
Okay, um, thank you, President Bando. Um, I just, you know, I know that I've been on the council side now for eight months. And prior to that, I was a resident, you know, on the other side for, you know, 14 years. So I just took some time today to really think about, um, how to describe Donna so that you can understand that this is a decision that is not made lightly and that it's something that I and we truly believe in. So, so here goes. Um, being this, being the Long Beach City Manager means being the CEO, i.e. the Che- Chief Executive Officer of a 300 to 1,000-plus person staff, depending on the time of year, and a $100 million annual operating budget and hundreds of millions in capital projects. To me, in this past almost six months, Donna has proven to me that she is a consummate professional. She treats everyone with respect. She is fair. She's experienced. She's seen it all. Nothing surprises her. She knows how to address problems head-on. And she knows BS when she sees it. She's compassionate. She's funny. She works 24/7. Donna is also a savvy networker who knows how to interact and develop relationships with other municipalities and their leaders in order to get Long Beach's fair share. She clearly understands that one should not ignore the directives of the New York State Controller's Office. She clearly understands that one should not, that, that she is accountable to all city council members regardless of their party. She is truly independent, which comes in real handy when she has to respond to county and federal requests for information where there's still ongoing payout investigations. When I, when I asked Donna a question, I get a thoughtful answer. Donna doesn't lie to me. I remember two years ago at a city council meeting when I asked an interim city manager if there were any stipends paid, and he said no. I know for a fact now that that was not the truth. Donna doesn't need to hide behind an archaic city charter or fancy legalese because she already knows what she's doing. She doesn't have a chip on her shoulder or acts as though council members don't know what they're doing. At the same time, she helps me become a better city council member by providing context and insight on complicated situations and sign, sound guidance on how to address them. She isn't using this role to seek higher political office. Donna has already brought in hundreds of thousands of dollars in grant monies to the city because other levels of government are finally confident that the Long Beach City Council consists of five professionals who, while they may not always agree, embrace their fiduciary responsibility to represent and protect the interests of our residents first and foremost, and fiend and to finally hire a professional city manager. The operational and financial mismanagement that Ms. Gaden and the city workers were left with by previous management teams is embarrassing and downright unexcusable. I am proud that this council had the courage to bring a complete outsider, a genuinely salt-of-the-earth good person with an outstanding professional background to, to run this city. I also think that the city manager's base salary needs to be distinguishably hi- distinguishably higher than her direct reports. This change is a start to make that happen, and in my mind is still a bargain. Donna, thank you for all your work and dedication to the residents of Long Beach and for helping us for another year.
Thank you very much. I appreciate everything you said. Thank you.
You're a little shy, right?
And, and just to give some, some context, uh, maybe some of you that weren't on the, uh, last meeting, uh, during one of the resolution discussions, two longtime employees of the city, uh, over 30 years each, uh, had both said that they haven't seen the city run this smoothly, uh, in, in, in all the time they worked for the city. So, um, it's, you know, it's slow, it's steady, but progress is being made. Uh, so we need, we need to keep that going. We need to get the city back on track and, uh, and we're heading in the right direction. So, and Donna's been a, a vital component of that. Um, so does, uh, any other questions or comments from the council? Okay, did we get any questions from the public?
Oh, I'm sure you did.
Uh, Councilwoman Tristan, did you have something you wanted to say? Are you going to wait till later?
No, I'm, I'm good. Careful with it all. Thank you.
That's it. All right, so, uh, Roy Lester first. Why is this resolution put on the agenda when no one has seen the employment contract that you were voting on? Uh, how can we ask questions about it if it is shrouded in secrecy? Why is a raise necessary after only being here for six months? Was such a raise promised when Ms. Gaden was hired? What are the other terms and conditions that the city council shall deem appropriate? Has anyone thought of the message that this is giving to the people who are laid off because there is not enough money?
Write all those down. So if you can, you know, go through those one at, back one at a time?
You want me to bite size it? Uh, so I think the first two are essentially related. Why is the resolution put on the agenda when no one's seen the employment contract that you're voting on? How can we ask questions about it if it's shrouded in secrecy?
It's not shrouded in secrecy. We just told you what's in there. It's, she's being treated like a, an exempt employee. And we told you what her salary was. And that's, that's basically it. There's no secrets. Uh, I assume anybody can foil for the contract once it's approved. Um, but this, this is not the secret. She's being treated like an exempt employee. And, uh, the contract's defining the salary and, uh, that's pretty much it. So.
Okay, so why is a raise-
And did he ask why it's on this, uh?
No, um, no, he did not. So why is a raise necessary after only being here six months? Was such a raise promised when Ms. Gaden was hired?
No, nothing was promised when she was hired because we didn't know when she was hired how it was going to work. She's being given a raise because it is talent we are trying to retain. And that is, that's it in a nutshell. Pretty, pretty simple.
Uh, what are the other terms and conditions that the city council shall deem appropriate as stated in the resolution?
There, I think that's probably just the resolution jargon. There's, there is no, like I said, he's welcome to foil this once it's, uh, approved.
There, there are no other stipulations or anything. There are none.
Okay. And then lastly, has anyone thought of the message this is giving to the people who are laid off because there is not enough money?
Yeah, that, well, the, the message this is sending is we have a competent city manager that's actually making a difference in getting us back on a path of fiscal solvency. And we need to keep that talent to continue the progress. So spending a, 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 a six and a half percent raise to save what could be huge amounts of money down the line, once we get the city's fiscal house in order, this is, I'm sorry, but this is a no-brainer. This is, I mean, I, I don't know what point we're trying to make here with these questions. So, uh.
I, I would, I would just say that this is, this is a city council that works together and we are, we, we have hired a professional city manager. They're not a dime a dozen. And they, they can't make the same as other senior managers in, in the city. They have to make more. And we are lucky that we found Ms. Gaden. She's a, again, a professional. I'm tired of people that don't know what they're doing as city managers. And that's why I ran in the first place.
And, and, and one thing that's worth noting is there are people who work for the city who report to the city manager that make more than the city manager. So keep that in mind too. Um, so I, I, I think we covered Roy's questions. Were there any other questions?
Yes, I have a series of questions from one Marie Brutus. Um, I'll go one by one. Is it true that Donna Gaden is the highest-paid city manager in Long Beach history?
Uh, uh, all right, I get, I need to give people some, some context here. Um, first, you need to understand who Marie Brutus is. Marie Brutus is a male, former city employee. Um, that, um, uh, is, is the principal on one of the, uh, troll pages that some people now like to read. Uh, he, he, he's been inundating the city with foil requests, uh, and, uh, and questions, uh, trying to bog down the staff and, and basically waste your tax dollars. Um, uh, you know, the foil officer today actually complained that she's unable to do her other job functions because this person in particular keeps sending in all these unreasonable and ridiculous foil requests in an attempt to try to, um, gum up the works of the city's operations. So, uh, I, I guess I'm going to be interested to see what these questions are because this person often sends in and kind of inflammatory stuff. But person's a troll. So, uh, by the way, this person also will, will often post and send questions in under Moshe Brooks and Al Albuquerque. So, uh, you have an idea who we're talking about here. But, uh, okay, so is Donna Gaden the highest-paid city manager? I, I have no idea. Um, I guess we could look that up and find out. I don't know what previous city managers made. Um, I'm sure we could find out. Uh, I guess I would flip it back to, uh, Marie and ask, where was your outrage when your, when your police commissioner friend was making $225,000 a year? So, um, okay, what's his next question?
Uh, what has she done to urge such a massive salary increase during a pandemic recession? I don't know if that one was already asked and answered.
Yeah, we already answered that as part of, uh, Mr. Lester's question.
Why did you refuse to release her contracts to the public slash media?
He would never ask for it. If they want to ask for it, that's fine. We would never ask for it. And first of all, how would this person know that we refused to release it to the media?
We just refuse to.
Why does she have a policy of refusing to speak to the media?
Doesn't. I've seen her speak to the media. Um, I know what she does like to do is she has the most qualified person in the city speak to the media when we have a, an, an issue that needs to be, uh, uh, discussed often. She's not, uh, I will say this, unlike, uh, previous people that sat in her chair, she's not, uh, looking to put herself up on a pedestal or get herself, um, uh, she's not looking for limelight or notoriety like some others were. So she puts the most qualified person out there. Um, and if it's her, and then she's spoken to the media on numerous occasions.
Was she given a stipend for moving expenses?
Here we go again. All right, asking this question time and again is not going to change the answer. This has been asked numerous times. No, she was not given a stipend for moving expenses. And continuing to ask the question is not going to change the answer. Maybe you think if you say the lie enough, that eventually people will start to believe it. Guess what? She didn't get a stipend. Next.
Was she given a stipend to pay for rent?
No, she got no stipends of any kind.
Are there any stipends or incentives in either of her two contracts? I guess you sort of-
Okay, I don't, I don't know how many, I don't know how many times I could, again, I guess they think this, he thinks if he keeps saying the lie enough, maybe people will start to believe it.
Since this salary wasn't budgeted for, where is the money coming from?
It's going to come from the budget. One of the things that, uh, the budget is now fixed, so we are not adding any additional expenses. So any adjustments will have to be made from cuts from elsewhere or, and moving money around appropriately.
Why not just let her work without a contract? Schneirman had a contract and we all saw how that worked out.
Yeah, and Schneirman was your friend. Remember that, Marie. Um, so, uh, because she, as, as a professional city manager, she asked for a contract and we have no problem giving her one. It memorializes, uh, what she's doing. And, um, that way we know we have some certainty because we have her for at least now another year, which again helps us with the credit reporting agencies.
Uh, last one, why can't this wait until next month when public meetings resume? I think that was basically answered as well.
Well, one, because the contract ends the end of this month. And two, a public meeting has absolutely nothing to do with this. We're discussing it now. So, uh, doesn't ma- unrelated.
Are no more questions from the public on this agenda?
Okay, thanks again, Marie. I'm sure you'll be sending more foils and, um, all right, next item.
Item seven is a resolution authorizing publication for hearing of an ordinance authorizing financing for the cost of fiscal year 2020, 2021 separation payments to or for the benefit of employees of the city upon separation from employment, stating the estimated total cost thereof is $2, $2,700,000, appropriating said amount therefore, and authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $2,700,000 bonds of said city to find out said appropriation. This item is for publication only. Hearing will be held September 1st at 7:00 PM. And on that note, um, I'm going to call for a floor amendment on this item. And just bear with me one second while I put this up, the amendment up on the screen. Okay, since we're, we may or may not have a virtual meeting the next time, need to replace the last two resolve clauses with the three resolve clauses that are up on the screen right now. Just so that way we have the option to do either one. Can I get anybody to make that motion to replace the two resolve clauses with this resolve with these resolve clauses?
Make the motion to do for those two resolve clauses.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Before we vote.
Sure.
Because we would do discussion. Now, just one question. It says that first resolved in the modification says that a public hearing shall be held, but the next resolve says we may not have the live meeting. It may be so. Is shall the appropriate word?
Uh, we're looking to have the hearing either way. So whether it's gonna be virtual or it's gonna be.
Okay, that's fine then. That's fine. I just wanted to make sure that shall was not tying it to a lot.
No.
Okay.
Okay, um, voting on the amendment, Councilmember Delory.
Uh, yes.
Councilmember Mandell.
Yes.
Councilmember Tristan.
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Bando.
Yes.
Okay, and item eight is a resolution authorizing publication of a notice of public hearing of an application wave off street parking requirements requirement 901 West Beach Street for skincare and home goods retail store. This is for publication only. Hearing will be held September 1st at 7:00 PM. Item nine is a resolution authorizing publication of a notice of public hearing of an application wave off street parking requirements for premise 240 West Park Avenue for a personal training studio. This item is for publication only. Hearing will be held September 1st at 7:00 PM. And again, on these two items, on both items number eight and nine, I'm asking for the same the same language to be put in except this time to to replace the first and second resolve clauses. Do I have somebody to make that motion?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Delory.
Uh, yes.
Councilmember Mandell.
Yes.
Councilmember Tristan.
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Bando. Okay. The amended items will be posted on the website tomorrow. Let me stop sharing my screen and we'll go to the voting. Bear with me one second here. Okay. Okay, so item number one is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement for the construction of the downtown to the boardwalk resilient connectivity project along Edwards Boulevard and to amend the budget. Would you just remove the adoption of this item?
I shall.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Delory.
Yes.
Member Mandell.
Yes.
Member Tristan.
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Bando. Item two has been taken off the calendar. Item three is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract for the removal of accumulations of grit and grit from a water pollution control plant with the lowest responsible bidder. Would you just remove the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Nope.
No, Bando.
Voting, Council, okay, Councilmember Delory.
Yes.
Uh, Councilmember Mandell.
Yes.
Councilmember Tristan.
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Bando.
Rock, paper, scissors with Councilman Mandell over that one. Uh, yes.
Okay, item four is a resolution authorizing the city manager to accept and execute a grant on behalf of the city of Long Beach from the New York State Department of Health. Would you just remove the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Who got that one?
Karen. Karen came up.
Okay. And Councilmember Delory.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell.
Yes.
Councilmember Tristan.
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Bando.
Yes.
Item five is a resolution authorizing the city manager to accept and execute a grant on behalf of the city of Long Beach from the New York State Department of Public Administration and to amend the budget. Would you just remove the adoption of this item? Second?
I will.
Anyone?
I will.
Okay. Voting, Councilmember Delory.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell.
Yes.
Member Tristan.
Yeah.
Vice President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Bando. Item six is a resolution authorizing the city council to enter into a contract memorializing the city manager's employment. Would you just remove the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Delory.
I'm very happy to vote yes on this. Donna is a professional and I'm proud to vote yes. Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Mandell.
I echo Councilman Delory's statements. I vote yes.
Uh, Councilmember Tristan.
I continue to echo everyone's approval. I vote yes.
Vice President McGinnis.
I proudly vote yes. Thank you, Donna.
And President Bando.
A heartfelt yes.
I bet.
Okay, item seven is a resolution authorizing publication for hearing of an ordinance authorizing financing for the cost of fiscal year 2020-2021 separation payments to or for the benefit of employees of the city upon separation from employment stating the estimated total cost thereof is $2,700,000 appropriating said amount therefore and authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $2,700,000 bonds of said city to finance said appropriation. Who would introduce and move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Delory.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell. I didn't get you. Uh, Councilmember Tristan.
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis.
Yes.
President.
You're going fast.
Going too fast, yeah. Vice President McGinnis, that was a yes, correct?
Yes.
Okay, President Bando.
Yes.
Okay, and item number eight is a resolution authorizing publication of a notice of public hearing of an application wave off street parking requirements for premise 901 West Beach Street for skincare and home goods retail store. Would you just remove the adoption of this item?
I will, but before we do, we just, if you're not speaking, can you put yourself on mute? There's way too much shuffling of papers going on. Thank you. Yes, David.
Okay, uh, and who will second as amended?
I will.
There we go again.
Too small. Councilmember Delory. Councilmember Delory.
I couldn't hear you. What was the what number is this?
Eight as amended.
Okay, yes.
Um, Councilmember Mandell.
Yes.
Councilmember Tristan.
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Bando.
Yes.
And finally, item nine is a resolution authorizing publication of notice of public hearing of an application wave off street parking requirements for premise 240 West Park Avenue for a personal training studio. Would you just remove the adoption of this item as amended?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Delory.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell. Councilmember Tristan.
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Bando.
Yes.
Who make a motion to close the meeting?
Uh, before we close the meeting, I believe our city manager wants to say something.
Um, yes, I just want to say thank you all for honoring me with another year contract. I look forward to working with everyone. And we have a lot of work to do and we will get it done. And I want the residents to know that we have been transparent even though there are some who believe that we have not been transparent enough. We are transparent and more so than ever before. Um, once we can start meeting in public, we will have that financial meeting so people can know where we are. And my management style has always been to be to work as a team. So for that question, why I don't do media is that it is not important for me to be seen just to be seen. We have several people that work in this municipality for the public and I want people to know who's working for them and they have the best knowledge. And that's why I put those people in front because it's not always about me. It's really about the residents and that we're doing the best job we can to moving the city forward. So once again, I just want to say thank you for trusting me for one more year.
Oh, help if I unmute. Okay, um, so with that now, Dave, we can.
Motion to close. Who make who make a motion to close?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Delory. That is my.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Mandell.
Yes.
Councilmember Tristan.
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Bando.
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to assume we got good and well fair questions. Are we gonna be doing like before? We'll post the questions and the answers online?
Correct, sir. So the questions from the twice delayed but ultimately held on August 11th meeting are currently up on the website. Just in case anyone has trouble finding them, it's city council meeting. So go under Government, City Council Meetings, 2020 City Council Proceedings. And the answers from there plus the previous several meetings, all in, it's probably answers and responses to three, four, or 500 questions are all there for the entire public to see. Questions that have been posed or statements that were made this week will be responded to in advance of the next meeting and they come from Voisha Brooks, Dave Palpatine, Stacy Shiotis, sorry if I butchered your name, Stacy, Linia Romano, Dorin Lyon, Catherine Demanda, John Wall Mueller, and Roy Lester.
Okay, so, all right, so look for those answers on online and thanks folks for joining us and I guess we will talk to you next on September 1st. Oh, 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 go ahead, Liz. Go ahead.
Please fill out your census. It's very important. You need help filling out your census. Call the office, call me, and let's get this done. We need to be counted, Long Beach. We're gonna be 10 years.
We're gonna get your bat light, Liz, and it's gonna say census and we'll shine it up in the sky. Um, okay, so I guess we'll we'll see you next on September 1st. So take advantage of the rest of the month and we'll talk to you next time. Take care. Have a good night.